Good morning, are we ready to start? Okay, I believe we're ready to go. Good morning. This public hearing is now called to order. Today is November 8 and the time is 10:05 a.m. I am Harminder Paul Singh Rana, Associate General Counsel for the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. On the panel joining us today is the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Childcare for the Department, Simone Hawkins. And assisting us with today's hearing is Svetlana Berdanik, Assistant to the Secretary to the Department. The purpose of today's hearing is to elicit comments and information to assist the Commissioner in determining whether to adopt certain amendments that the Department has proposed to Chapter 3 of the Commissioner's Regulations. These proposed changes concern child daycare performance summary cards. These changes were published in a notice of intention to amend this chapter. This notice was published in the city record on October 7, 2021. A copy of the first page of this notice of intention will be provided to the recorder to include in the official record. Persons wishing to speak at this hearing were asked to preregister. I am not aware of anyone who has preregistered to speak today at this time. If you join this hearing now and would like to testify, please indicate so in the chat area of your screen. And please indicate your name and if you have any affiliation. Please also unmute yourself. As indicated in the notice that was published on October 7, written comments can also be submitted to the department in addition to or in lieu of speaking at the public hearing. Those comments can be submitted to the department through any number of ways, including directly to the department via email at resolutioncomments@health.nyc.gov. You may also submit written comments to the department via the city's New York City Rules website, You may also mail your written comments to the department at the address provided in the notice. You may also fax your written comments to the department at the number provided in the notice. If you are submitting comments, please do so by 5:00 p.m. today. Again, as I just indicated, I am not aware of any individuals who have registered to speak at this time. This hearing is scheduled to run from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. I will keep this open for a few moments in case anyone wishes to indicate that they would like to speak. And if not, in a few minutes, I will adjourn the hearing to approximately 11:00 a.m. Or until such time as we are notified that someone wishes to provide their comments to us on these proposed rules. For these next few minutes, I can just briefly summarize for those of us who are joining what the proposed changes that the department seeks to make and on which we require or request your comments. The department is proposing to amend Chapter 3 of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York to modify the contents of childcare performance summary cards. The revised performance summary cards will, we believe, more effectively communicate important information summarizing the childcare's program performance for the past year. Numerous fields that were part of the initial cards are being removed to improve clarity. Any data that is no longer presented on or displayed on these performance summary cards will still be available on the department's website. And the revised card will provide information as to how the public can access the information on the website. Again, if you are joining the hearing now and wish to testify, please so indicate in the chat area on the lower right of your screen. And please indicate your name and any affiliation. I have not been informed of anyone who wishes to register to speak at this time. As I mentioned, this public hearing is scheduled to run until 12:00 p.m. In the absence of any registered speakers or anyone else who has notified us via the chat that they wish to speak, I will adjourn this public hearing until 11:00 a.m. Or as I indicated, oh, I am just informed that an individual is registering to speak at this time. And we will allow him a few moments to register and to be able to provide his comments. I've been informed that someone wishes to speak. We are allowing a few moments for that individual to see if he can register and make his comments available to us. I am informed that another individual is attempting to register to speak. We will give both of those individuals a few moments to get themselves set up. Thank you. It appears someone has registered to speak, but we would ask that they also unmute themselves. Svetlana, if you could unmute the individual? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Bender, Gregory Bender?
Yes, yes.
Good morning, sir. If you could please, as I have just done, state your name and if you have any affiliation?
Sure, I am Gregory Bender and I'm the Director of Public Policy at the Daycare Council of New York.
Thank you, sir. Please continue.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. As I said, I'm Gregory Bender and here on behalf of the Daycare Council of New York. We are a membership organization of New York City's early childhood education providers. And our member organizations provide early childhood education programs in both center-based and home-based settings in all five boroughs, most often with contracts through New York City Department of Education. Early childhood education providers depend on our partners in government to certify the safety and quality of services that we offer to children and families. Choosing an early childhood education provider that meets the needs of their families is an important decision for parents and they seek out many resources from word of mouth to research on the web, including these DOHMH performance evaluations, the classic Eckers scores on the DOE's pre-K finder and other governmental and non-governmental resources. At this hearing, we know the DOHMH proposed the following changes, including categorizing violations as either facility violations or program violations, categorizing violations as either low risk or high risk, and including an assessment of providers' performances as excellent satisfactorial and need improvements on the performance summary scorecards. We believe these changes do represent meaningful improvements to the performance summary scorecards that will help parents more easily understand a childcare program's compliance with the city health code. The proposed language will help to address longstanding issues where high-quality programs appear to pose high levels of risk because of facility issues outside of their control. This problem has been particularly acute for many of our member organizations that have been operating buildings operated by the New York City Housing Authority. DCCNY also appreciates the DOHMH making the distinction between high and low-risk violations and urges DOHMH to include language indicating when a violation has been dismissed or rectified. We want to acknowledge that many of our member organizations brought some of these concerns about the provider scorecards to leadership in DOHMH Bureau of Childcare and we appreciate the Bureau's responsiveness to these concerns as shown in the proposed changes. And we urge the adoption of the proposed changes to Chapter 3 of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York. And they submitted this in writing as well and thank you for working with us on this and for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bender. I was informed that another individual was attempting to register to speak. We'll give that person a moment or two to make themselves available. Thank you.
Morning, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir. Is this James Potter?
Yes, this is James Potter. I'm the co-compliance officer and health services supervisor for Sheltering Arms Early Childhood. We have seven early childhood programs located throughout Queens, the Bronx, and Harlem. And all of our sites have contracts with the DOE as well, kind of mirroring Mr. Bender. I had actually spent the last 10 years in Long Island and I had really familiar with OCFS and their childhood regulations. So coming over to Article 47, it's definitely been a little bit of a learning curve for me this past year. But just as with my experience of being a director and an education director and so forth, we all know how arduous and how much work goes into, you know, providing high-quality childcare. And the directors have, they work tirelessly to make sure that, you know, everyone is doing that. For me, just, I just want to point out for the satisfactory rating, I don't, I like that, that there's ratings now, excellent, satisfactory, needs improvement. I think that's a good change, however, for two lower-risk violations, if you have, for example, only three and that goes to needs improvement, I just feel like that maybe could be reconsidered, the number of violations. I mean, if we have, for example, two weeks ago, we had a huge storm, right? And you walk into a building, some of these are owned by the city, right? So we have to put in tickets for repairs and so forth with NICA and that could take, that could take time. So if you walk into the building and there's a ceiling tile that needs to be changed and maybe there was water damage that dripped onto the wall and you have one of your inspectors walk in that day, that's two violations right off the bat that really you could not have been prevented. Yeah, we could get tickets and we can get that paint fixed and we could try and get the ceiling tile fixed as soon as possible. But I don't really think that's fair to go from satisfactory to needs improvement. If you had already had a violation, for example, one violation before that and now you get two violations because of the weather and now it looks like my program needs improvement from a parent walking in the door or looking online. I just feel like that could be misrepresentative to the program, especially if you're meeting all of your early childhood goals. I just feel like the two risk violations, more than two, is a little misrepresentative. So I just wanted to have my voice heard on that and hopefully that could be reconsidered or just, you know, maybe talked about a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Potter. Does that conclude your comments? Mr. Potter? Okay, I'm going to assume Mr. Potter has concluded his comments. We thank him. Thank you to those who just submitted comments. I am not aware at this time of anyone else who has registered and/or wishes to speak at this time. This hearing is scheduled to run and will run until 12:00 p.m. today. If there is no one else who wishes to speak, to provide their comments at this hearing, I will accordingly adjourn this until 11:00 a.m. At which time I will reappear on your screens and ask again if anyone wishes to speak. And/or if we are informed prior to 11:00 a.m. that somebody wishes to speak, we will reconvene at that time. Again, if no one wishes to speak at this time, I will adjourn this hearing until 11:00 a.m. Thank you. Okay, good morning. I am Harminder Paul Singh Rana, Associate General Counsel for the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. And with me is, on the panel is Assistant Commissioner Simone Hawkins for the Department's Bureau of Childcare. We are conducting a public hearing on proposed rule changes by the department concerning performance summary cards for childcare centers. This public hearing has been open since approximately 10:00 a.m. It is scheduled to run until 12:00 p.m. Time is now 11:03. Individuals who wish to speak at this hearing are asked to register. And you may do so at this time. You are afforded an opportunity to comment on the department's proposed rules. This time, I am not informed of anyone who wishes to speak. However, I will allow this hearing to stay open until someone wishes to speak or until 11:30, at which time I will magically reappear and ask again if anyone wishes to speak. We will certainly reconvene this hearing if I'm informed that someone wishes to speak prior to 11:30. For those of you who may just be joining us, this public hearing concerns department proposed rule changes concerning childcare center performance summary cards. The department is making these changes in the hopes of making the performance summary cards more clear and effective to parents and caregivers looking to evaluate various childcare centers for their children. And this public hearing is scheduled to run until 12:00 p.m. Not aware of anyone wishing to speak at this time. If you wish to speak, please indicate so on the chat feature in the lower right of your screen. And as there are no individuals who are registered to speak at this time, I will adjourn this hearing until approximately 11:30. This hearing is scheduled to run until 12:00 p.m. If anyone wishes to speak, please indicate so by utilizing the chat feature on your screen or otherwise letting us know. Thank you, we will reconvene at 11:30.
Pat, you're gonna continue or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Going on now. Good morning. This is Harminder Paul Rana, Associate General Counsel for the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. This is the ongoing public hearing on proposed amendments by the department to Chapter 3 of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York. These proposed amendments concern updates to childcare center performance summary cards. The department has been conducting this public hearing since approximately 10:00 AM this morning. This hearing is scheduled to run until 12:00 PM. Anyone wishing to provide comments or otherwise testify in this public hearing may do so by utilizing the chat feature in the lower right of your screen. As well as provided in the notice itself, there are multiple ways for individuals wishing to comment who do not wish to testify at this public hearing. You can submit written comments through the New York City Rules website directly to the department through the department's email address for resolutioncomments@health.nyc.gov, as well as by mailing your written comments to the department at the address provided in the notice, as well as submitting a fax to the department at the number provided in the notice. You may also provide your comments in person, I believe, and drop them off at our front desk. As I have indicated, this public hearing is scheduled to run until 12:00 PM. I am informed that there may be an individual who wishes to speak, but I am awaiting confirmation of that. As indicated on the screen, if you would like to join this hearing and wish to testify, please indicate so by clicking the chat feature in the lower right of your screen. And please identify yourself and if you have any affiliation. Svetlana, do we have anyone who is registered to speak at the moment?
No, Raj, we don't have anyone indicated wants to speak. So we'll adjourn it for later. A few just said and you'll see if anyone will join us.
Thank you, Svetlana. Persons wishing to speak at this public hearing were asked to register. And you may register now if you have not already pre-registered by accessing the chat feature on the lower right of your screen. Okay. I have not been informed of anyone who wishes to speak at this time. I will accordingly adjourn this hearing until approximately 12:00 PM, at which time we will appear and presumably conclude the hearing. However, if we are notified that someone wishes to speak prior to us reconvening, we will certainly attempt to do so at that time. Okay, thank you. We will adjourn until approximately 12:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Simone. Good afternoon, everyone. The department has been holding a public hearing on a proposed, a set of proposed amendments to Chapter 3 of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York. These proposals concern modifications to childcare center performance summary cards. This public hearing was scheduled to run from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM today, November 8th. That date and information was published in the city record on October 7th, as well as the proposed changes. As I indicated, this public hearing is to have run from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The time is now 12:02 PM. And I am not aware of anyone who wishes to speak at this time. Accordingly, because the time has run for the duration of this public hearing, I am now closing this public hearing. Anyone wishing to submit written comments may continue to do so up until 5:00 PM today. And you can do so through various means, including through the New York City Rules website, directly to the department at resolutioncomments@health.nyc.gov, as well as by mail and fax as provided in the notice. As I indicated, it is now 12:02 PM. There are no other individuals who I am aware of who wish to speak. So therefore, I will be closing this public hearing. I'd like to thank Assistant Commissioner Simone Hawkins and of course, Svetlana Burdinek for assisting us, as well as a shout out to our IT folks who helped make this all possible. And thank you to everyone who viewed and testified. Thank you again on behalf of the department. Thank you. Bye-bye.